The point, all questions should be directed to the board and not to the appellant. The board will discuss the appeal, vote, and continue to the next appeal. An affirmative vote of two-thirds of the board, which is four votes, should be necessary to decide in favor of an appeal. The action of the board is final and the only relief is through the court. Does anyone have any questions yet? Okay, if there are none, then the secretary will begin by calling role. And then at the end of the statement here, we'll be advised that, I'm not sure about this one or not, variances will expire six months from the date of this meeting. So, we'll take role first and then we'll get on with the next part.
It will expire if you do not get, so in this case, a business license, within six months. DeBorchard.
Here, present.
Bruce Gale.
Present.
Dennis Browning.
Here.
David Halpep.
Uh, here.
Jack Nash, excused. Deanna Versiglio.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay. You have the minutes of April 3rd in front of you. Do we have an approval for those?
I make a motion that the minutes be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
No, we have to have discussion. I have a correction on the minutes.
Yes.
I noticed and I'd already spoke to Cassie about that. If you look at the second page, it's one-third paragraph from the bottom, Dr. Roberts, who pretended to Saginaw County School District. If you look at the last sentence, it says, "He would like to make sure the bus will not be located there during these times." And that should be truck. The minutes should reflect that that should be truck and not...
I had mentioned the same thing to Cassie and my wording was semi, but it means the same thing.
Yeah, whatever, whatever he said, I, that's what I think we need to make, just to make sure that the minutes are correct, that we find those.
I also mentioned to Cassie that Ruth Ann Napp's name has a K in front of it, K-N-A-P-P. So, that would be the other question I have. Anybody else have anything? Okay.
With those exceptions.
So, are we all set to approve then the minutes from April 3rd?
Callable.
All set.
Aye.
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 All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign.
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing we have before us is the agenda. Take a look at that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that then? Okay, let's call that then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign. That is approved also. On the new business, we have before us case number J-19 slash 0011. It is a public hearing for a variance request to allow a portable vegetable stand to sell produce to neighborhood residents on the southwest side of the city. So, we will begin with that. And then we will...
Madam Chair, do we have to say that this is at 22, 222 Wayne, instead of just the west side?
It could be. I was assuming that when she would come to the podium, that she'd be discussing that, but thank you for making that point.
Okay.
So, this is a public hearing and anybody that would like to speak should come to the podium, give your name, address, and tell us what this is all about.
Hello, thanks for having me. I'm Hillary Malama. I'm a professor at Saginaw Valley State University and my husband and I just purchased the old west side collision building at 22 Wayne Street, 222 Wayne Street. And we would like to have an urban farm stand there to sell produce from our farm in Hemlock that's on South Poseville Road. And part of the reason that I want to do this is that area is a bit of a food desert. The closest grocery store that they have is actually a Family Dollar and then a little bit down the road is also a Save-A-Lot. And so, that area has really little access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And what I would like to start there is a food stand to sell the produce from my farm. And I'm also going to apply to accept a bridge card, because I assume that, given that area and that how poverty, how much poverty is there, that they're probably going to want to do that. So, I would apply for a business license, I would apply for the SNAP bridge card. And we have a loan from Frankenmuth Credit Union under the M.I.Grow grant that they have. So, I've got people supporting what I'm doing and we would really like to bring benefits to that area. And I know that one of the concerns with selling food as retail there versus wholesale, because this is an M1 industrial property, is there might be an increase in traffic. But I'm really aiming for the local residents there. And I imagine people could drive in if they wanted to, but my real focus is going to be the people in the community that lives immediately in the area.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
It says here, it's a portable vegetable stand. Are you putting it inside the old building or outside?
Yeah, so my idea is to have a stand that will be on wheels. And when I'm there, I will roll it out. I'll bring my vegetables straight from the farm and put them there. And then when I'm done, I will roll the stand inside and take the remaining vegetables to sell wholesale to a place in Midland called Food Prep Pros. So, they'll buy the bulk of what I have left, but I want to make sure it's fresh for the residents.
How many days do you plan on doing this, a week?
This will be during the summer and because I'm a faculty member, I still teach in the summer, but I teach once a week. So, it would be three to five days a week, maybe more, but we go bogan on the weekends.
Thank you.
I have a question. You said something about a sign, you wanted a sign. Where would that be?
That's a little bit difficult because the property line goes up right next to the building, so that's something I'm going to need to probably work with the city on what I'm allowed to put up. Because unless I put it right on the building, I'm going to run into the property line. So, I have thought about this and I'm not sure what the solution is, because I also don't want to cover up the west side collision painting that's on the side of the building because this building, I don't want to necessarily call it a landmark, but it's been there a long time and people know this business. And I don't really want to paint over that. I want it to kind of keep the heritage that it has. So, I don't want to cover that up, but I do want people to know that I'm there. So, that's something I still need to work on with the city for the signage.
I think that you'll have a lot of traffic because it's a good idea. When you pull in though, are they going to be pulling in and parking and going to your stand or otherwise where do they park?
I have a small parking lot.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
You think that'll be big enough?
I don't know. I guess maybe you have more faith than I do, which is, feels pretty good. Yeah, I don't know. So, the blackjack place across, just kind of, I don't know if you'd call it a street, but next door has some grass parking. We have parking along the side of the building and in the back. I guess what I had imagined more is foot traffic, people from the immediate area walking, but we may also have cars. It's a fair concern, yeah.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, can I question?
Yes, please.
How long have you owned this building?
We bought it Labor Day of last year.
And the purpose whereby in the building?
We bought it mostly for personal use, to fix our farm equipment and store some of our other vehicles. So, the building itself is mainly for personal use, but I also wanted to, we got to know some of the people in the community and it's, they're nice people there.
At the time, did you know that was zoned M1?
I didn't, actually, because when you check the building itself, the building is commercial and I didn't know that the land itself was M1. I hadn't looked far enough into it to know that. So, it was a little bit of a surprise.
I just want to mention also, I drove by and the building is in pristine condition. They have been taking very, very good care of it. And I did attach the map of the zoning around the area. The zoning is really outdated in that whole neighborhood. You can see their property is outlined in black. Right across the street is supposed to be manufacturing and those are houses already, right across the street. And I drove around that whole neighborhood, all the way down, this is all single-family houses. So, it's not a stretch to say that this could definitely have this type of a business there.
Anyone else?
And I guess my question shouldn't be, how are you going to run your business? That's, I don't think that's my question. Is that right? I mean, we're not, are we, I guess I'm asking for some direction from here. As a board, I have an M1 and we're asking it to be, is this temporary? Is this permanent? I mean...
It's going to be summer use only.
Every summer from that point?
I would think.
I'm fine with that.
If that went to, so are we changing the zoning in that?
We're making a variance on the zoning.
And how long does a variance last?
It just goes with that building owner. So, if she were to leave, somebody else couldn't come in and run a farm stand.
Right.
Could she then rent that out to somebody else to run a vegetable stand? If she still owned it?
I wouldn't, I don't think so. I'm not sure that...
That's a gray area.
If I have a, if I have a vegetable stand there and then next, and then next summer, I have vegetables and I have other items, it's now becoming a convenience...
She's not getting the variance on other items, so...
Right. So, we would give the variance to, specifically, I will find the definition of this type of a use. It is allowed in all business districts, or business districts two and three, sorry.
Yeah.
So, this is a use that we do have in the zoning ordinance, just not in M1.
Not in M1. So, this would be the first time we're doing M1?
Um...
Because we don't, we don't, this doesn't exist in M1s now.
Can I speak to that for a second?
Let me, Cassie, are you, are you, are you aware of any other in M1?
I am not personally aware of this.
We turned one down a couple of months back and he had this sort of thing on a location adjacent to it. And I don't remember what that zoning was, but it was the same sort of thing.
Is that the one with the plastic thing?
Yeah.
That was our one.
That was our one?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was a residential one?
Yeah.
And he...
It's already a business.
But that, he wasn't turned down because of that, he was turned down because of the awning. He still had the right to do it there on an R1. But not where he was hoping to expand into. It was going to be an eyesore.
Mm-hmm. And much too large for the area.
Yeah, right.
Go ahead.
Okay, so when I looked at the land uses that are allowed for M1, you are allowed to sell wholesale vegetables, just not retail? So, it seems like this is a related use, but again, I think part of the issue is the traffic that it would drive. But, so...
And for the wholesale, they think of that more as like a warehousing type of thing, where then you're shipping out?
I think so, yeah, I think so.
There haven't been any responses. You sent out two, 300 feet of the property, within that property, no responses.
Yeah, that was me. Yeah, there hasn't been any responses.
My question, in looking at the map, who would respond within 300 feet?
The people.
Well, I don't see any houses.
There was quite a few houses that were included, as well as all of the businesses that go back nearly to the...
So, you would, you would send out notices on South Hamilton also?
So, I do it on GIS, it goes out 300 feet and then it's a radius, a circle. It included quite a few houses, I sent out...
Here, but I'm wondering if Hamilton Street was over 300 feet away?
They could have responded because of the posting for the Saginaw News.
That as well. It gets posted in the Saginaw News and it gets posted on the city website. But I sent out about 70, so it included quite a few and they get sent, really, I sent out 140, 70 to the, to the address and then 70 to the person who owns that. So, some of them cross over, but some of them could be rental housing or, I know the land bank owns a couple of properties in here, so they got a couple.
The business that's directly to the south of that, what is that business, directly to the south, that looks like there's a whole bunch of stored vehicles?
That is blackjack.
Yeah, that's blackjack asphalt.
Blackjack asphalt next door. And north of that then, is that vacant building that, that should be vacant, is that right?
Yes.
Up with Lee Street?
Yes, yeah.
And then the FOP Hall, Fraternal Order Police Hall's on the corner.
Oh, right, yep. So, this would be under, it's an open-air business? Oh, sorry, I just thought I found it, but I guess I didn't. I'll come back to you.
When, when do you, this is produce that you're growing on your own farm?
Mm-hmm.
You're not bringing in any other produce from any other place?
No, and I don't think I would want the liability of that either.
When, when do you think you would start then selling produce?
So, I've got the seeds started now and I'm going to plant them the weekend of May 19th and that's around the same time that I'll start getting asparagus. So, asparagus I'll have mid to late May and then I'll start getting the rest of my produce throughout the summer. We'll be done probably before October, I'm sure. My latest thing is going to be Brussels sprouts.
So, May, May up to October, just roughly?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I need to ask then if there's anyone else that wishes to speak to this? I know you have someone with you, I didn't know if she was also going to speak or not.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Fissler. I am a student at Saginaw Valley State University and I'm actually starting an independent study with Dr. Malama about different, like, growing and processes of that, of how we can do different, we were just talking about like forecasting and stuff for previous, from previous years into future years. For this whole process, I have worked at a local greenhouse for the past six years. So, I kind of have some idea about plants and how the whole germination and starting them and picking and kind of selling them too. So, for this to be kind of a thing that is for like a food desert, especially in an area where a lot of people are trying to eat healthy and everything, this would be an asset to that area. So, I just think it's kind of a really cool thing on how she has started this and has since then been growing it. And to see that people are actually into this stuff, it kind of makes me happy because I have worked at a greenhouse for the past six years and I see how happy it makes other people to be planting and stuff. So, I think it's a really cool thing.
Could you give me your address?
Oh, yeah. 767-99 OMO, O-M-O, Road, Armada, Michigan. 48005.
Thank you. Could you speak a little louder? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Before she sits?
No.
No. No questions. Which greenhouse?
Justco's Greenhouse in Richmond, Michigan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? Anyone else that would like to speak on this variance request for the vegetable? No one else? Last time? Last chance? No one else? Do we, would like to discuss this then or we all stop?
I'd call it first, I think. Do we need a motion before we let discuss?
We will, if, well, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance J-19 dash 0011.
I'll second it.
Is there discussion amongst us?
I'm going to have to kind of rely on you. This is my very first time and so, I'm going to have to rely on your judgment as, as, you know, zoning Board of Appeals, because I'm, I have no clue how you're, how you're thinking, how you're operating yet. So, I guess I have to kind of go along with the majority that we would have here. But I, I think this is a wonderful idea. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned. I know, we're talking about this being a food desert, but then at the same time, the location in a food desert isn't the best location, because it's not, you know, I'd love to see this thing over there on Michigan or somewhere around there where you'd have a lot more traffic for them, but it's a great, it's a great idea. And if this, if this committee chooses to support that, I certainly would go along with that one way or the other.
There is a place, just in back, the SEIU building?
Yes.
That they, they have free vegetables that they grow there. Yeah, what's the name of the company?
So, how does that, how does that work then? If you got the place a few blocks away, well, that's, that has nothing to do with us.
They might not have what I want this day given away free.
Yeah, that's not, that's...
Lot of times, all the food is gone because of the...
No, we don't, that has nothing to do with our vote.
Yeah, exactly.
Competition has nothing to do with it.
Okay, so, are we ready to proceed then?
I am.
Have a motion in a second? Okay. So, all in favor of require, of a variance request to allow the vegetable stand at 222 Wayne Street signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign. Hearing none, you're good to go, the motion passed.
Motion passed.
And good luck to you. I hope you have a good growing season.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
So, then the only requirement is within six months, apply for a business license, which actually Laura from the clerk's office called me about you the other day, so I'll tell her and she can just start processing your old one.
So, okay, I need to study new one because I actually did the LLC paperwork, so it's going to be...
Okay. Okay, well, perfect.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be updated on that. If you are curious about the SEIU or, I mean, I can talk, share a little bit about that if you're just curious.
No, we're good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you.
You bet.
Do you know Professor Hatcher?
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the boring meeting.
Oh, no, I'll stay. I can't imagine you being much longer.
Oh, yeah.
What, what discipline?
Statistics.
So, they're probably either in science and engineering or in my college. Depends on if they're adjuncting or if they're full professor.
He's full professor, author, that's okay. I just thought maybe you knew him. My wife's best friend is his, his wife.
Okay, awesome. Go on, roll.
All set? We'll move on to old business. Other than the Board of Appeals on zoning bylaws, does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add to that? Okay. So, how would you like to proceed with this? Just...
So, I did get a comment. So, Dennis thought that maybe I shouldn't put, so, I changed out a lot of where the secretary is and put the City of Saginaw Board of Appeals on zoning staff. He thinks that maybe they're, so maybe that should be worded differently, like city staff rather than Board of Appeals on zoning, because we do not have a budget and so technically I work for the city. But I am staff to you guys, so I would just kind of wanted to know how you guys would rather have that worded, so it's not confusing. Do you have anything to add, Dennis?
Well, yeah, and, and my concern was, this, this states that she is our employee. And if she is this zoning Board of Appeals employee, then I would like to know what our budget is. I would like to know how we hired her. I'd like to know if she should choose to leave, how this assessment would be, if that was our employee. But I don't believe she is our employee. I think she is an employee, she is contracted through the City of Saginaw. Is that right, through the Saginaw future?
Well, we wouldn't put that in there though.
No, no, no. But what I'm saying though...
But it's still City of Saginaw.
It's a City of Saginaw employee that has been assigned to the secretarial duties for the, the Board of Appeals and zoning staff. So, we, we don't have a staff. This is a city staff that they hire and they just assign, they're, so tomorrow, they could assign somebody else if they wanted to. And, and there's, that's...
Right.
So be it, I mean, but, so that, that was my only concern was the, if you said the City of Saginaw staff will complete all secretarial duties, including the preparation of the minutes, I mean, because that's what it is, City of Saginaw staff. And, and not, you don't have to have the Board of Appeals on zoning. Does that make sense then? Because it's a City of Saginaw staff.
Right. I follow what he's getting at. So, the part in red needs to be changed on page two?
There's multiple, it's, it's written probably three or four times. I can change all of them.
As long as they don't keep changing people on this.
But we, I agree what you're saying, but we really don't have no control over that.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd like to have consistency that you've had and you've been spoiled by that and that's very nice, I like that. But at the same time, we, you know, this is all, has to be negotiated and it has to be approved by council and, and so therefore, you know, there's no reason why it wouldn't stay consistent, that I would know. I, you know...
So, we table this until...
Oh, no, you can, you can make...
You can make the changes?
Yeah, you can, you can say, anywhere, just remove the words Board of Appeals on Zoning Staff.
Okay.
And it would be City of Saginaw Staff. Because you already got the City of Saginaw there. And she can do that. Throughout the document, she could do that.
And then Deanna found one place where I did not replace secretary with that.
Okay.
Which is on, I don't have my number, the third page.
Voting.
Under voting.
There is no hurry on voting on this. You can send this back, make the corrections, take a final look at it, unless, does it have to be voted on today? I mean...
Well, no. We've just had this on the agenda like four times.
Right.
And I don't know how much discussion you've had in the past, but I, you know, in looking through this, that's the only concern that I had, was that we referred to it as a staff person.
Staff person from the city.
To, from, to a staff person of this, this appeals board and we don't have...
We don't have, right.
So, I'm, I'm good with it either way.
Well, we could look at it again if you guys want to or...
I have no problem with whatever we do on it.
I just, the corrections were based off of the zoning ordinance.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I just think she should change whatever she needs and we'll go for it.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion to, to accept this with the exception that was due noted about the Board of Appeals on zoning staff and make that to read the City of Saginaw. the Board of Appeals on zoning staff and make that to read the City of Saginaw staff. And I'd make a motion that we approve the adoption of the, of the updated bylaws. And I'll second it.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed by the same sign. That motion passed. Thank you, Cassie, for the work on that too.
Yeah.
Sorry, you got a last-minute new guy here asking questions that probably shouldn't have been asked.
That's good.
Months ago, but I didn't know.
We're all learning from that, so, here we go. Public comments, there, other than us, there is no one in the public to make any comments, so...
Can we, can we adjourn before the lights go off again?
Yeah, we've been moving now.
Do I have a motion?